The Whispering Woods Meeting of the Township of Bernards Planning Board of August 8, 2017 is now called to order. Everybody, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law of 1975, notice of this meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Bernards was posted on a bulletin board in the reception hall of the new municipal building, Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Bernardsville News, Bernardsville, New Jersey, and to the Courier News, Bridge Water, New Jersey, on July 20, 2017, and was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. Ms. Kiefer, roll call, please.
Ms. Pedici.
You have to speak louder.
I'm sorry. Chairwoman Pedici.
Here.
Mayor Gaziano.
Yeah.
Committee Member Malley advised that he would be unable to attend. Mr. Baldessari.
Here.
Ms. Kleiner advised she would not be able to attend. Mr. Michelleu advised he was not able to attend. Mr. Ross.
Here.
Ms. Fidel.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. You may proceed.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to excuse Committee Member Malley, Ms. Kleiner, and Mr. Michelleu?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Baldessari, seconded by Mayor Gaziano. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good evening. This is a public hearing for the Islamic Society of Basking Ridge Incorporated, ISBR, Block 9301, Lot 2, Site Plan Number PB12-001, Application for Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan Approval to construct a new house of worship and related site improvements on property in the R2 Zone designated as Lot 2 of Block 9301 on the tax map of the Township of Bernards and located at 124 Church Street in the Liberty Corner section of Bernards Township, New Jersey. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the requirements of Whispering Woods versus Middleton Township, 220 NJ Super 161, Law Division 1987, to consider terms of settlement of the action filed by the applicant in the United States District Court for the District of New Jersey entitled Islamic Society of Basking Ridge at L versus Township of Bernards at L, Case Number 16CIV1369, with respect to the Board's December 8, 2015 denial of the applicant's application for preliminary and major site plan approval. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the settlement agreement between the Islamic Society of Basking Ridge, ISBR, and Mohammed Ali Chaudry, plaintiffs, versus the Township of Bernards, the Bernards Township Planning Board, and its members and their official capacity defendants. Case Number 16CIV1369MASLHG. It was executed on May 30, 2017. Section 3 of the settlement agreement titled Whispering Woods Hearing mandates the sequence for this meeting. Mr. John Drill, Planning Board Attorney, will now begin the hearing. Mr. Drill?
In accordance with the settlement agreement dated May 30, 2017, entered into by and between the Islamic Society of Basking Ridge, which I'm going to refer to as ISBR in the remainder of this proceeding, and the Township of Bernards and the Bernards Township Planning Board, and I'm going to refer to the Township of Bernards as the Township and the Bernards Township Planning Board as the Planning Board. Among other parties, the Planning Board Attorney must announce for the record at the commencement of the Whispering Woods Hearing the terms of the settlement, submit a copy of the settlement agreement into the record, and identify for the record the settlement site plan and accompanying documents. I will do this now. So first, I want to submit a copy of the settlement agreement dated May 30 into the record as Exhibit B1. Cindy, do you have that premarked for me?
I do. Yes, I do.
Okay. Hold it up. Settlement agreement. You marked it B1? That's in evidence. The form of the settlement agreement that we've entered into evidence as B1 is signed on Page 14 by Carolyn Gaziano, Mayor, on behalf of the Township of Bernards, and by Hiram B. Carey III Esquire, on behalf of the defendant planning board. There's a separate Page 14 signed by Mohammed Ali Chaudry on behalf of himself and ISBR as plaintiffs. Second, I have to identify for the record the settlement site plan and the accompanying documents. And I will do that. I will just note that they are listed in the review memo from Township Planner David Schly, but nonetheless, I will list them. The first document is entitled Preliminary and Final Site Plan. It's a set containing 15 sheets. Sheets CO1 through C13, SO1 and SO2, prepared by AWZ Engineering, Inc., and the revised through July 27, 2017. The second document is titled Vehicle Circulation and Fire Service Plan. It is Sheet 313. This sheet is printed in color, prepared by AWZ Engineering, Inc., and revised through July 17, 2017. I just note for the record that a black and white print of this same sheet is included in the 15-sheet plan set that I referenced as Item 1. The third document is an architectural plan set containing four sheets. Sheet A00, A01, A03, and A04, prepared by Daniel Lincoln, revised through July 19, 2017. The fourth document is titled Topographic and Boundary Survey, prepared by Sun Land Surveying, Inc., dated October 10, 2011, and revised through April 25, 2015. The fifth document is titled Stormwater Management Report, prepared by AWZ Engineering, Inc., dated April 17, 2012, and revised July 25, 2017. This report includes a map entitled Existing Drainage Area Map. It's Sheet EDA1. Another map titled Proposed Drainage Area Map, which is Sheet PDA1, and a proposed inlet area map, Sheet IDA1. All three of those maps are dated March 30, 2012, and revised through July 27, 2017. The sixth and final document that consists of the settlement site plan and accompanying documents, or comprises them, is a document entitled Stormwater Management Facility Operations and Maintenance Manual, prepared by AWZ Engineering, Inc., dated July 15, 2013, and revised July 17, 2017. Okay. The third thing that I will do is I will announce for the record the terms of the settlement agreement. To do this, I will be reading out loud Paragraphs 1 through 3 of the settlement agreement, and I will then read the titles only of Paragraphs 4 through 25. This is going to take over 30 minutes, so please bear with me. For the record, copies of the signed settlement agreement have been available from the Township Clerk's Office, and a signed copy has been posted on the Township website since June 7, 2017. So here we go. Paragraph 1, Settlement Site Plan. Within 25 days of the effective date, ISBR will submit to the Township Planner, Township Fire Official, Planning Board Engineer, and the Planning Board Planner, collectively referred to as the reviewing professionals, revised preliminary and final site plans and an accompanying revised stormwater management report and architectural plan. And those are collectively referred to as the settlement site plan and accompanying documents. The settlement site plan and accompanying documents will reflect the terms of such plans and documents last considered by the planning board prior to the denial of the application. Except that, and there are five exceptions. Now, before I read the exceptions, in the settlement document, in a footnote, it lists those last set. So I'm not going to repeat it here. Other than the last sentence in that footnote, I'm going to read because we have to correct it. There must have been a typographical mistake. In the settlement agreement, the last considered architectural drawings are Sheet A01 and A02, last revised on December 5, 2014, and Sheets A03 and A00. The footnote says A04. It's A00, last revised December 20, 2013. Here are the exceptions to those plans that were denied by the planning board in 2015. A. The settlement site plan will provide for 50 paved parking spaces consistent with the United States District Court's December 31, 2016 ruling on plaintiff's motion for partial judgment on the pleadings. B. The settlement site plan will further reflect ISBR's voluntary designation of an area for overflow parking on non-paved surfaces sufficient to accommodate at least 10 cars. No site improvements will be required for that overflow parking area. C. On the settlement site plan, the eastern detention basin will be shifted substantially into the area vacated by the elimination of the eastern row of 31 parking spots, subject to feasibility in the judgment of ISBR site engineer and taking into account the space needed for the six-foot-wide basin maintenance area around the perimeter of the basin. D. The settlement site plan and accompanying documents will reflect related site layout, grading, drainage, landscaping, lighting, and vehicle circulation changes stemming from the revisions to the parking lot and the relocation of the eastern detention basin as deemed appropriate by ISBR site engineer. E. The settlement site plan and accompanying documents will reflect compliance with the agreed-upon site plan revisions listed at Exhibit B to the settlement agreement. In addition, ISBR agrees to the conditions of approvals listed at Exhibit C to the settlement agreement. All other issues, site plan requirements, or conditions of approval of any kind are waived and released by defendants, including any issues, requirements, or conditions raised during the proceedings below by the reviewing professionals, counsel to the planning board, or defendants or any of their staff, as well as any issues presented in the planning board's prior resolution of denial. Now, continuing in Paragraph 1 of the settlement agreement, ISBR will provide the reviewing professionals with an opportunity to review its initially proposed settlement site plan and accompanying documents for 20 days after initial submission. Defendants will not be involved in that 20-day process involving the reviewing professionals in any way. The reviewing professionals shall review the initially proposed settlement site plans and accompanying documents and provide ISBR with any comments on or before the 10th calendar day of this 20-day period. Within this 20-day period, ISBR will make its site engineer available to the reviewing professionals for comments and conferring on such plans, and will consider any reasonable input provided by the reviewing professionals to the extent such comments relate to changes made pursuant to Paragraph 1 of the settlement agreement, which I'm in the middle of reading, and ISBR's site engineer deems them necessary and appropriate. During this time period, ISBR may provide the reviewing professionals with a further revised site plan and accompanying documents to the extent ISBR deems it desirable in its sole discretion. Within 10 days after the 20-day review period described above, ISBR will formally submit its final settlement site plan and accompanying documents to the planning board for approval at the Whispering Woods Hearing described in Paragraph 3 below. Now, this is an editorial comment on my part. For the record, the settlement site plan and accompanying documents were submitted on July 28, 2017, which is within the MLUL-required 10-day period. The July 28 submission was outside the 10-day period called for in Paragraph 1 of the settlement agreement, but it's within the five-day grace period provided for in Paragraph 22 of the settlement agreement, so the settlement agreement has been complied with. Paragraph 2 of the settlement agreement deals with the settlement payment. As set forth in this paragraph, defendants will pay a total of $3.25 million, which is referred to as the settlement payment to ISBR. The settlement payment will be made within 14 days of the party's execution of this agreement by a check or wire transfer into the escrow account of Doogie Hewitt and Domaluiski, PC, using wire transfer instructions that will be provided by Doogie Hewitt and Domaluiski. Defendants represent that the settlement payment will be made from defendants' insurance carriers. Doogie Hewitt and Domaluiski will maintain the settlement payment in its escrow account and will not release it to ISBR unless and until the planning board votes to approve ISBR's site plans at the Whispering Woods Hearing and adopts a resolution memorializing its decision as described in Paragraph 3 below. Upon such vote and within three business days of receipt of the adopted resolution described in Paragraph 3 below, Doogie Hewitt and Domaluiski shall transfer the settlement payment to plaintiff's counsel by wire transfer according to instructions provided by plaintiff's counsel or by check. The settlement payment will be allocated as damages to ISBR in the amount of $1.5 million, and attorney's fees and litigation costs to plaintiff's counsel in the amount of $1.75 million. The party shall release each other of claims as set forth in Paragraphs 13 and 14 in the settlement agreement. Notwithstanding anything in this Paragraph 2 or any other provision of this settlement agreement, any releases provided or to be provided by plaintiffs, as well as this agreement, will be void in all respects if the planning board does not provide preliminary and final site plan approval of the settlement site plan at the Whispering Woods Hearing and adopts a resolution memorializing its decision as described in Paragraph 3 below. In the event that the planning board does not grant preliminary and final site plan approval of the settlement site plan at the Whispering Woods Hearing and does not adopt a resolution memorializing its decision as described in Paragraph 3 below, Doogie, Hewitt, and Domaluiski will return the settlement payment to defendants' insurers, and the party shall return to litigation. Paragraph 3, the Whispering Woods Hearing. This is the longest paragraph, so you're going to have to bear with me the longest time now. The planning board will convene a duly noticed special meeting, it's referred to as a "special meeting", at which it will conduct the Whispering Woods Hearing regarding the planning board's agreement to settle this action and ISBR's application for preliminary and final site plan approval of the settlement site plan. It's referred to as the Whispering Woods Hearing. The chair before gave the actual case and the citation for which it's named after. No unrelated business will be included on the agenda for the special meeting other than the Whispering Woods Hearing, and I note, if you look at the agenda, that's been complied with. Defendant Planning Board waives its rule regarding the timing of submission of the settlement site plan in advance of a hearing therein and agrees to schedule the special meeting and the Whispering Woods Hearing no later than 15 days after ISBR submits the final settlement site plan to defendant planning board, provided that the number of intervening days is sufficient for the planning board to provide the required Open Public Meeting Act notice of the special meeting and for ISBR to provide at least 10 days' notice of the Whispering Woods Hearing in accordance with the Municipal Land Use Law, specifically NJASA 4055D-12. And I note that all these things have been complied with. I've reviewed the notices. They're in order. They were sent out within the required times. The special meeting and the Whispering Woods Hearing will be scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM, and the hearing will continue until completed, including final deliberations and a vote by defendant planning board, even if the hearing must continue beyond 12:00 midnight and into the next day. In no event shall the proceedings extend beyond one single Whispering Woods Hearing. For the avoidance of doubt, the planning board's final deliberations and a vote on the settlement site plan and accompanying documents must occur, and the hearing must be concluded within the course of a single Whispering Woods Hearing. And I note for the record that this meeting was commenced right at 7:00 PM this evening, and we are into the Whispering Woods Hearing right now. ISBR will provide notice of the Whispering Woods Hearing at least 10 days prior to the date of the hearing by A. Publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the township; B. Certified mail to the owners of all real property located within 200 feet and all directions of the property as shown on the current tax duplicate, which shall be provided to ISBR by defendants within two days of the execution of this agreement. I note, all those things have been done. C. Personal service or certified mail to the Somerset County Planning Board; D. Certified mail to any public utility company, cable television company, or local utility which possesses a right-of-way or easement within the township and is registered with the township in accordance with NJASA 4055D-12.1, the names and addresses of which will be provided to ISBR by defendants within two days of the execution of this agreement. And I note, all that has been complied with. Upon submission of the final settlement site plan and accompanying documents to defendant planning board by ISBR, the planning board will, pursuant to NJASA 4055D-10, make the settlement site plan and accompanying documents available for public inspection during normal business hours in the planning board's administrative office located at 277 South Maple Avenue, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, 07920. And I note that that has been done as of the day they were filed, which was July 28, 2017. The following procedures will govern at the Whispering Woods Hearing. A. The planning board attorney will announce for the record the terms of this agreement, submit a copy of the agreement into the record, and identify for the record the settlement site plan and accompanying documents. I'm almost done doing that. That's where we are right now. B. The town... B. The township planner will present testimony regarding the settlement site plan and accompanying documents, and will explain the differences between the settlement site plan and ISBR site plan that was denied by the Planning Board. I note, this will be done down at the table in the front of the room. When the township planner, Dave Schley, goes down to that table, the Planning Board will leave the dais, they will sit in the first two rows of the seats to everyone's right of that table, so that they can see what's being projected up on the screen. When Mr. Schley is finished with his presentation, he will come back to the dais, the Planning Board will come back to the dais, and then questions will start. C. The township planner, the Planning Board planning expert, and the Planning Board engineering expert will submit written reports addressing their reviews of the settlement site plan and accompanying documents. That's been done. If requested by defendant Planning Board, the Planning Board planning expert and the Planning Board engineer may also testify during the hearing to address matters related to the review of such documents. I am going to swear and to testify, Mr. Schley, who's also going to present, I'm also going to swear in Mr. Banish and Mr. Quinn to answer any questions. ISBR's counsel will not make a formal presentation, but reserves the right to: 1. Respond to the written review reports referred to above. Ask questions of relevant experts regarding the same. Address any comments or questions raised by any person at the Whispering Woods hearing. Cross-examine any witness testifying at the hearing. And if necessary, address any specific approvals or relief requested to be granted in connection with preliminary and final site plan approval of the settlement site plan. D. No live witness testimony will be presented or heard by the Planning Board except for the testimony heard pursuant to Paragraph 3F below. I will get there, but that's the testimony of interested parties and residents of Bernard's Township. At the request of the Planning Board or ISBR, however, at the request of the Planning Board or ISBR, ISBR's engineer may testify during the hearing to address various revisions reflected in the settlement site plan and accompanying documents. E. The Planning Board shall provide all interested parties with the right, through their attorneys if represented, or directly if not represented, to cross-examine the witnesses identified in the settlement agreement, subject to reasonable limitations as to the amount of time allowed for such cross-examination in accordance with NJASA 4055D-10D, which shall be as follows: For purposes of the Whispering Woods hearing and NJASA 4055D-4, a "interested party" is defined as any person owning property within 200 feet of the property. Prior to being able to cross-examine witnesses, all interested parties shall identify themselves and provide under oath the address of the lots they own within 200 feet of the property. All interested parties shall have three minutes to ask cross-examination questions per witness. The time limitation has been imposed to ensure that the hearing proceeds efficiently and in a timely manner while affording all interested parties the right to cross-examine witnesses. And I add, the three minutes is for asking the questions, not for the answers, not for objections. We have a timer sitting at the table, to my left, your right, who will time the questions, not the answers, not any objections, not any rulings, anything like that. F. Interested parties and residents of Bernard's Township shall have the right to provide sworn comments on the settlement site plan and accompanying documents during the hearing, provided that they identify themselves and their address prior to giving their testimony. Any interested party or resident of Bernard's Township that fails to so identify himself or herself or their address will be precluded from speaking at the hearing. G. All comments at the hearing made by any interested party or residents of Bernard's Township shall be strictly limited to addressing the differences between the settlement site plan and the site plan that was denied by the Planning Board, and no other comments shall be permitted. In accordance with NJASA 4055D-10D, five minutes of sworn testimony per interested party or resident of Bernard's Township shall be permitted. This time limitation has been imposed to ensure that the hearing proceeds efficiently and in a timely manner while affording all interested parties and residents of Bernard's Township the right to provide the Planning Board with comments. And I add, the same timer sitting at the table over there will time the comments. They will stop the timer if there are any objections, they will stop the timer if there's anything else going on. It's five minutes for comments. H. No commentary regarding Islam or Muslims will be permitted. Now, with regard to this last clause, H. I just read, of the settlement agreement, I would like to make clear that public comments and questions during this evening's meeting can address all issues relevant to the site plan application under review, even if those comments or questions involve reference to Islam or Muslims. The Planning Board will conduct this meeting in a manner consistent with the laws of New Jersey and the U.S. Constitution, and will consider any objections in context when and if they are made in a manner consistent with those rules, with those laws. However, the Planning Board reserves the right to exclude from its consideration any discriminatory or inflammatory statements unrelated to the land use issues before it. The final unlettered clause of Paragraph 3 of the settlement agreement provides that within 30 days of the completion of the Whispering Woods hearing, the Planning Board will adopt a resolution memorializing its decision in accordance with its rules and regulations and including all findings of fact and conclusions of law required under applicable law. In the event of an approval, such, I ask that all cell phones please be either shut off or put on vibrate. In the event of an approval, such resolutions shall not impose any conditions of approval other than: A. The conditions listed on Exhibit B to the settlement agreement; B. Any conditions agreed to by ISBR as a result of any comments made by a reviewing professional during the 20-day period described in Paragraph 1 of this agreement. Now, the remainder of the settlement agreement, as I said, I'm going to disread by title. So Paragraph 4 governs payment of professional fees. Paragraph 5 governs cooperation. Paragraph 6 governs ULEPRA, diversity, and inclusion training. Paragraph 7 is the law governing ISBR's application. I'm just going to add, the ISBR's application for preliminary and final site plan approval, including all proceedings pursuant to the settlement agreement, will be governed by the township zoning and land use ordinances which were in effect on April 20, 2012. Paragraph 8 governs ordinance number 2242. Paragraph 9 governs legal challenges to the agreement or the settlement site plan. Paragraph 10 governs enforcement by judicial order, jurisdiction retained and removal. Paragraph 11 is titled incorporation of defendants' resolution with the United States. Paragraph 12 deals with the effective date. Paragraph 13 deals with the release of claims by plaintiffs. Paragraph 14 deals with the release of claims by defendants. Paragraph 15 is titled dismissal of the action. Paragraph 16 is titled claims not assigned. Paragraph 17 is titled independent judgment and no other promises. Paragraph 18 is titled authority to enter agreement. Paragraph 19 is titled agreement jointly prepared. Paragraph 20 is titled separate and divisible terms. Paragraph 21 is titled entire agreement and modifications. Paragraph 22 is entitled no waiver and cure period. Paragraph 23 is titled notice and submissions. Paragraph 24 is governing law and forum. And Paragraph 25 is titled execution and counterparts. I have now completed announcing for the record the terms of the settlement agreement, so, Madam Chair, how do you wish to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Drill. I will now list the owners of the parcels that meet the definition of interested parties. Harrison Brook LLC for 433 Somerville Road. Tarun Sethi and Chavu Sethi for 477 Somerville Road. Richard K. Kenworthy for 131 Church Street. English Farms Associate LP for 3613 Valley Road. Umberto O. Garcia and Allison T. Garcia for 129 Church Street. Mukder Singh for 108 Church Street. David Tancredi and Kelly Tancredi for 125 Church Street. Christopher J. Quick and Loretta A. Quick for 114 Church Street. David Patterson for 121 Church Street. Joseph Abate and Carla Abate for 485 Somerville Road. Liberty Corner Fire Company for 95 Church Street. Each of the owners listed above will have three minutes, as Mr. Drill said, to ask cross-examination questions per witness. The three-minute limitation applies to questions only, not the answers to those questions. Co-owners of a parcel cannot add their separate three minutes to allow one owner to ask six minutes of questions. I am identifying the owners now so that you can plan accordingly. I will call each owner to the podium in the order given above. Mr. Drill, please swear in the witnesses.
Okay, so I ask David Schley, David Banish, and Tom Quinn to please stand up, raise your right hand. And do you, all three, swear that the testimony that you're going to give in this proceeding is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Starting at the end with Mr. Schley, please identify yourself for the record.
David Schley, county planner.
David Banish, planning board planner.
And Tom Quinn, board planner.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I'm now asking the Planning Board members to leave the dais and sit in the first rows to, right here, to view the screen. Please hold your questions until we are back on the dais with microphones. Mr. Schley, please begin your testimony when we are all seated.
the site development plan of the submitted settlement plan. This sheet's revised through July 27, 2017. And I'm going to go through the differences between this plan, the current settlement plan, and the plan that was last considered by the Planning Board, which is the denied site plan, which was last revised December 8, 2014. And I'm referring to my review memo to the board, dated August 4, 2017, and I've listed 11 items that I want to point out as the differences. Item number one is the total number of parking spaces has been reduced from 107 to 50. And also, with regard to the parking, the plan now shows an overflow parking area that is sized to accommodate 14 cars. And specifically, with regard to that change in parking, where the changes predominantly occur is the, and for the reference, the north is to the left in this site plan. There used to be a, the denied plan had a row right here of 31 parking spaces, that's the easterly row of 31 parking spaces, has been eliminated. And on the west side, there used to be a row of 25 compact parking spaces, which extended into this area, and that row has been replaced with 15 standard spaces. And the number of, total number of compact spaces has been reduced from 25 to 13. And the former row of 25 compact spaces, which was here, all the compact spaces are now, have moved to the east, all 13 of them in this area that I'm pointing at. And the row of this on the denied plan was a row of 14 parking spaces, which has been eliminated, and this area is now proposed as an overflow parking area on a permeable paver surface, which is sized to accommodate 14 vehicles. And another change is that the prior denied plan included 107 spaces, and 38 of those spaces were to be banked, meaning they were not going to be constructed initially, they were going to be reserved for future construction. And those spaces have been eliminated, the proposal no longer includes any bank spaces, all of the parking will be constructed with the initial construction. Moving on to number two, the easterly detention basin, known as Detention Basin Number Two, has been shifted away from the easterly property line, and also reduced in size. And that, where the row of 31 parking spaces was eliminated here, allowed that to happen. The basin used to be up here, it was shifted to move into the area that was vacated by the row of parking that was eliminated. The basin was also reduced in size. It used to cover a land area of approximately 7,500 square feet, and it was located entirely within the 50-foot buffer area along the easterly property line. The basin is now approximately 6,600 square feet, and approximately 4,300 of that is located within the buffer. The basin provides a relatively consistent setback from the easterly property line of about 34 feet. Another change in the, this is the drainage along the easterly property line, the swell that appears here has been revised, and also, the current plan adds a couple lawn inlets, one right here and one right here, in the front yard portion of the swell. And that's something that's new that's on the settlement plan. In that same area, the six-foot-high solid wood fence proposed along the property line, on the denied plan, it was set back two and a half feet from the property line. It was shifted away from the property line and now is proposed seven and a half feet from the property line. And the, that fence previously was connected to a four-foot-high post and rail fence that enclosed the detention basin. And now, the six-foot-high fence stands independently from the four-foot-high post and rail fence that encloses the basin, so you have two separate fences. Moving on to number five, the tree plantings proposed between the fence and the basin within the easterly buffer have been moved further away from the property line. That's just a function of the basin and the fence moving, all the plantings moved as Number six, the denied plan included a row of inkberry shrubs in front of the westerly parking spaces, and actually, between the parking spaces and the guide rail that's proposed along a retaining wall in this area. And that inkberry shrub row was removed, and what's been added in that area, instead of a single rail, guide rail, the guide rail is proposed to have two 12-foot, 12-inch high boards stacked on top of one another, so they form a 24-inch-high solid timber rail screen in that area. And number seven, the tree plantings that are on the west side of this parking area, which is the low side of the retaining wall, have been changed in the formation from a single row to a double-staggered row. The same, essentially the same number of trees have been just spread out a little more. And the, number eight, the light fixtures throughout the parking area have been changed from a metal halide lamp to an LED lamp, and the average illumination has changed from, in the driveways, from .7-foot candles to .74-foot candles, and in the parking area, from .81-foot candles to .74-foot candles. Number nine, the granite block curbing along the area that encompasses the building has been changed from vertical curb to mountable curb. And also, the same change was made along the outer edges of the landscaped islands in the parking area. These portions of curbing have been changed from vertical to mountable. Number 10, the fire hydrant previously located in front, or at the back end of the front detention basin, has been shifted around to the west side of the detention basin, and a second fire hydrant has been added behind the building. And also, the fire department connection that was previously located on the building has been relocated to the west side of the entrance driveway. And number 11 just states that- And number 11, just states that in conjunction with those main changes, there are other incidental changes that stem from, from those more major changes. And that's about it.
Those are all the changes, correct?
Those are all the changes. Those are all the changes.
Let the record show that there were no questions from board members. And I'll start the interested parties section. Does a representative for Harrison Brook LLC have any questions? If so, can you please come to the dais?
Can't hear you. Can you speak into that microphone?
Before that occurs, I have a couple of points on Robert Raymar. I represent the applicant.
You have questions for the witnesses?
I have no questions, but I believe your professionals wrote review letters that should be entered in evidence, so that when people ask questions, they have the benefit of, at the same time, asking the professionals any questions they have.
Generally, if you want us to do that, we can do that generally. You know that the board, any professional report is part of the record, so it doesn't get admitted as an exhibit. You want them admitted as exhibits?
They should at least be identified for the record.
Okay, I will identify the reports that have been, first I'll give board reports that have been submitted, and then I will identify other agency reviews. We have an August 3 letter from Board Engineer Thomas Quinn, which is two pages long. We have an August 3 memo from Board Planning, Board Planning Expert David Banish, which is eight pages long. We have a memo from Township Planner David Schley, which is eight pages of text and two pages of reduced reductions of the site plans. On page nine is a reduction of the settlement site plan, portion of Sheet CO3, last revised July 27, 2017. And Sheet 10 is the denied plan, portion of Sheet CO3, last revised December 8, 2014. We then have a supplement memo dated August 7, 2017, from Mr. Schley, one page long. We then have an agency review memo from the Somerset County Planning Board, an agency review letter from the Somerset County Planning Board dated August 4, 2017, consisting of two pages. And we have a, an extension of the LOI, the Letter of Interpretation, by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, which was written to the applicant but submitted by the applicant to the board, and it's dated June 10, 2017. And I neglected to mention a fire prevention memo, which was submitted to us by Mr. Schley. It was, it's dated July 5, 2017. It's a one-page memo addressed to Mr. Schley from Andrew Butterbaugh, the fire official. And Mr. Schley submitted that to the planning board. Are there any other, either board, township, or other agency reviews of which you are aware?
No. My second point is that two of those review letters call upon the applicant to accept certain conditions, and I think the record should reflect that the applicant accepts those conditions. There is one request for a slight modification in Mr. Quinn's letter in item number three on page two.
Mr. Quinn's letter dated, dated August 3, item which?
Item three, which runs onto page two, at the top of page two, makes a recommendation, which the applicant accepts. And Mr. Schley's original letter.
Mr. Schley's original memo to the board dated August 4, 2017.
On page four, has specific comments, which the applicant accepts. Specific comments one, two, three, and four. And although his paragraphs five, six, basically repeat items from the settlement agreement, it says that any approval should be conditioned on those items. And even though we already agreed to them in the settlement agreement, we agree to them again now in response to Mr. Schley's memo. I have my third point. Think the record should include a letter written by the Secretary of the Planning Board today to one of the residents of Burnetstown Township regarding the availability of all the plans for review for the entire statutory and ordinance required periods.
If we're going to do that, then why don't we also reference the letter that she responded to?
That's fine, too.
Okay, so there's a letter, now-
There's a letter from Mr. Barth.
Yeah, so just, just normally, if a letter comes in like that, without someone to be able to answer questions about it, the board does not consider it and ignores it. So, I mean, the board secretary responded to that letter, that's part of the record. Do you want both of those part of the record before the planning board?
Only the board secretary's letter. If it's already part of the record, it's part of the record.
It's part of the record, it's part of the record that this board has not seen on purpose, okay?
I'd like it to be part of the record that the board sees.
So you want the board to also see the letter written by Mr. Barth?
If that's required, yes. Because I think if there is any appeal, the board's response to Mr. Barth should be a part of the record.
Okay, so, on a break, I will make sure that everyone sees Mr. Barth's letter. And I will make sure everyone sees Cindy's responding letter. Both of those letters are dated today. And just for the record, Mr. Barth sent, Cindy, he came by express mail? So Mr. Barth's letter of August 8 came by express mail, addressed to Cindy and CC'd to Mr. Raymar, not to me. Cindy was nice enough to alert me to it and send me a copy. And for the record, Cindy replied in a letter also dated August 8, 2017, which she emailed to Mr. Barth. She dropped an original in the mail. Is Mr. Barth here by any chance? Is Mr. Barth, we have a hard copy of the letter, just in case you didn't get your email, which I'd like to give to you. So that's now been, you can go get it down that aisle. So, no, you can't. So now, where-
And my last point is that although I've already submitted the affidavit of publication in the Courier News, I have an affidavit of publication in the Burnetsville News. So I'd like to hand that up to the-
Why don't you just come up and, or send someone up to give it to her who was ever on the end?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raymar.
That concludes my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Raymar.
So I guess you had questions, right?
Yes. Does a representative for Harrison Brook LLC have any questions? Please come to the podium.
No one's coming to the podium.
If not, let the record show that no representative for Harrison Brook LLC step forward. Does Tarun Sethi have any questions? Let the record show that no, Tarun did not step forward. Does Charu Sethi have any questions? Let the record show that Charu Sethi did not step forward. Does Richard K. Kenworthy have any questions? Let the record show that Mr. Kenworthy did not step forward. Does English, does a representative of English Farm Associates LP have any questions? Let the record show that no representative for English Farm stepped forward. Does Umberto O. Garcia have questions? Let the record show that Mr. Garcia did not step forward. Does Allison T. Garcia have any questions? Let the record show that Ms. Garcia does not have any questions. Does Muktar Singh have any questions? Let the record show that Mr. Singh does not have any questions. Does David Tancredi have any questions? Let the record show that Mr. Tancredi does not have any questions. Does Kelly Tancredi have any questions? Let the record show that Ms. Tancredi does not have any questions. Does Christopher J. Quick have any questions? Let the record show that Mr. Quick does not have any questions. Does Loretta A. Quick have any questions? Let the record show that Ms. Quick does not have any questions. Does David Patterson have any questions? Let the record show that Mr. Patterson does not have any questions. Does Joseph Abate have any questions? Come forward, Mr. Abate, please.
Good evening, everyone. Joseph Abate, 485 Somerville Road.
Thank you.
Very simple questions.
Okay. Please proceed and start the timer.
First of all, congratulations, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Raymar. Easy questions. First of all, I want to thank you for taking all the things I've asked for into consideration in this new application.
About this louder?
Okay, I want to say thank you for taking all of the things I've asked for into consideration in this application. That's a friendly neighbor. But I do have another question. If the size of the facility didn't get any smaller, and the parking did, is there any way that we can kind of control the traffic on the corner that I live on? Or is that for a different forum? And what I mean by that is perhaps no parking, 50 feet from the corner, not to block if people have a tendency to park on the shoulder, parking directly in front of my home, things like that. Am I still on the clock?
I think that's directed to the professionals, not-
Yeah, I'm just asking anyone who can answer the question.
Okay, Mr. Schley?
What answer, that's Somerset County issue.
Oh, Somerset County said they have nothing to do with the traffic on there. So let's talk about the Basking Ridge Road, the one I live on, Somerville Road. Is there anything we can do to keep people from parking in that white zone, you know, right, right in front of my house, if these shit overflow?
I think that's probably an issue to talk to the township engineer about.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I don't know that that's, okay.
Second question would be, the screening to the west, that you've, you've actually removed parking spots, and you've put a double guardrail there. And then you, you mentioned that you staggered the bushes. If you recall, some time back, I invited everyone to the house to look and see, and we had discussed the possibility that if, in fact, the final design were to be obtrusive to me, or intrusive to me, that you would all come back and you'd look through my eyes and see what we can do to adjust that. Is that still on the table?
Yes, the Planning Board Landscaping Committee is still on the table.
Great. Perfect. I'm cool. Welcome to the neighborhood. Congratulations. I wish I could get a commission, because I lost sleep, too, but welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Abate. Does Carla Abate have any questions?
No.
Let the record show that Ms. Abate did not have any questions. Does the Liberty Coroner Fire, does a representative for the Liberty Coroner Fire Company have any questions? Let the record show that the representative did not step forward. Now that the question period of the hearing is completed, I will now open the hearing to sworn comments. Interested parties and residents of Burnetstown Township can provide sworn comments on the documents and are required to identify themselves and their address prior to giving testimony. If you wish to provide sworn comments, please come to the table on the left. Mr. MacArthur is there. Beginning right now, to provide identification of our address, please form a line, and I will call you to the podium. Interested parties and residents, as verified above, can provide sworn comments only about the differences between the settlement site plan, along with the accompanying documents, and the plans and documents that were denied by the planning board. The maximum time to provide these comments is five minutes per interested party and resident, or resident. Is there anybody that wishes to come up to provide sworn comments? Please, please go to Mr. MacArthur for verification, and then you can come right to the podium. And if others have, if you could just form a line on the side, so that we can efficiently get everybody up.
Sure. Thomas Mahala, 51 Leighton Road, Far Hills. M.A.H.A.L.A.
M.A.H.L.?
A.L.A. Mahala.
And your address again, I'm sorry?
51 Leighton Road, Far Hills.
All right, can you raise your right hand? You swear that the comments that you're going to make in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guide?
I do.
And as, before you start the timer, and you swear that you're a resident of Burnetstown Township, correct?
I am, correct.
Okay. Please speak up.
To the members of the planning board, thank you for giving the public the opportunity to participate in this important meeting. First, I'd like to quickly make a comment as to the procedures you outlined just before this meeting. I find it outrageous that you would change the rules of what can be discussed just before the meeting. The settlement agreement has been public for 60 days now, and it clearly articulates that no commentary can be made regarding Islam or Muslims. How can one talk about a mosque without mentioning Islam or Muslims, especially in fear of violating a court order? In fact, I've heard from many people in town that there's no use attending tonight's hearing as a result of this. Once again, it seems like a complete capitulation, and the debt continues to be stacked in ISBR's favor. This evening marks the 20-month anniversary since the planning board appropriately voted to deny preliminary and final site plan approval for the Islamic Society of Basking Ridge application to construct a mosque at 124 Church Street. Prior to the December 8, 2015 formal vote, each of the planning board members publicly stated his or her reasons for denying ISBR's application. Moreover, each of the planning board members independently reached his or her conclusion. In fact, prior to the vote, then-chairman Jeffrey Plaza opened the meeting by stating, and I quote, "The board members have not had any prior opportunity to discuss this application or any of its evidence with each other. The deliberation in the form that's going to take place tonight is the first opportunity for each of the board members to understand what the other board members are thinking and what their positions are concerning the application," end quote. The outcome of that meeting, subsequent to the planning board's members clearly articulating their basis to support their views, was for two planning board members to support preliminary site plan approval, subject to substantial changes, and four planning board members to deny preliminary approval. All six members denied final approval. Although the members were not able to discuss their views with each other prior to that evening, each of the six planning board members cited the same four items in their denials of both preliminary and final site plan approval. In particular, item number one, the lack of sufficient buffer on the east side of the property. Two, inadequate internal- property; two, inadequate internal traffic circulation; three, insufficient fire and safety access; and four, a noncompliance stormwater management plan. The fact that the board members each independently cited the same four reasons for denying the application is telling that the final plans submitted by ISBR, which are the subject of tonight's meeting, must address these deficiencies. In ISBR's and Dr. Charter's May 6, 2016 memorandum of law, in support of their motion for partial judgment on the pleadings with respect to the issue of parking filed in federal court, they stated, "The planning board's parking determination forced ISBR to substantially redesign its original site plan application. Since ISBR was required to more than double its parking lot, its 4.08-acre property contained less land that could be used for other purposes. The size of the parking lot was central to the other basis for denial cited by the planning board. In essence, ISBR and Dr. Charter claimed that if they only had been able to keep the number of parking spaces at 50, they would not have any difficulties meeting the township's ordinances, and there would not have been a basis for the planning board to deny their application. And now, through a suspect court process, ISBR has gotten its wish, and the number of parking spaces has been reduced. Therefore, this board should fully expect that all of its previous concerns and well-articulated deficiencies with the prior plans have been addressed. As this evening progresses, members of the public will discuss the differences in ISBR's most recent set of final site plans, and whether the changes in the plans address the board's previously specified concerns. Item number one, as mentioned before, screening and landscaping. The easterly buffer that is necessary to protect the Quicks' property has been a central issue to ISBR's application. The planning board rightly determined that having a 320-foot by 23-foot detention basin located within the buffer did not allow ISBR to provide adequate screening for the Quicks' property. ISBR has attempted to address these concerns by shifting the easterly detention basin to the west and partially relocating it out of the 50-foot eastern buffer. However, the detention basin, which is now 27 feet in width, still intrudes into the easterly buffer by 15 feet, continuing to impede the planting of landscaping in the buffer. A strip of land of 6 feet now remains between the parking lot, drive aisle, and the western side of the buffer. Before I discuss whether the changes to the buffer are adequate, I'd like to recall...
Sir, your five minutes are up. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Lloyd Martinson.
Can you spell your last name?
M.A.R.T.I.N.S.O.N.
And address?
4 Carriage Way in Basking Ridge.
You raise your right hand, and do you swear that the testimony and comments that you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you. You can start now.
I'm picking up where Tom Mahala left off in discussing the screening and landscaping deficiencies. I'd like to recall the necessary screening and landscaping that a buffer must contain. For this application, former chairman Plaza succinctly outlined a buffer's objective when stating his reasons for his denial of ISBR's previous final application on page 47. The next issue, he says, "The next issue which concerns me is that relating to screening and compliance with the screening ordinance 21-28 dot 1. I find that as a result of the deficiencies with the buffer, I cannot approve the applicant's landscape plan. Specifically, I find that the applicant's landscape plan does not provide sufficient landscaping, in large part due to the applicant's desire and decision to effectuate screening on the eastern property line through a fence rather than a landscaped screen, although the latter is expressly preferred in the ordinance." Chair Plaza continued, "As stated previously, it is noteworthy that the necessity of the fence screen is a direct consequence of the applicant's own decision to consume the majority of the most critical sections of the easterly buffer with a detention basin, thereby undermining and frustrating the very purpose of the buffer in those areas. Additionally, based on the tentative plans before us, I cannot find that the applicant has complied with a buffer screening along the eastern property line. In that regard, the application lacks sufficient information as to the efficacy of the proposed screening. The revised plans that eliminated the 31 easterly parking spaces allow for the buffer to be shifted to the west, so that it's partially outside the buffer, but as noted, it intrudes 15 feet into the 50-foot buffer. More telling, though, is ISBR's continued desire to use a fence as a screen for the Quicks' property. The fence is now 7.6 feet from the eastern property line, but all of the landscaping is on ISBR's side of the fence for the aesthetic beauty and enjoyment of ISBR's members. So even though it's ISBR's obligation to protect the Quicks' property with the use of a fence, ISBR is admitting that the detention basin remains an impediment to achieve the desired screening through landscaping, the preferred method noted by Chair Plaza. And while the fence has been located slightly off the property line to protect existing trees, it will still be located within the drip line of 21 of the 25 trees on or near the property line. Perhaps you will recall the expert testimony this board heard from Bill Gunderman, a New Jersey certified tree expert and approved forester regarding the detrimental results of disturbing the drip lines of existing trees. And while we're mentioning drip lines, ISBR's most recent stormwater management report includes a 140-foot swale running parallel to and through the eastern buffer, disturbing the drip lines of existing trees. As to your determination tonight of whether ISBR's latest proposal meets the township's ordinances, at the December 2015 meeting, Chair Plaza discussed what would help him make an informed decision. He stated, "By way of specific example, the applicant never provided the board with any cross-sections that showed what the landscaping would actually look like along the abutting residential property lines, and which would have given this board the necessary perspective to assess whether the applicant complied with the ordinance's requirements. Without that additional information accompanying documents to show what the screen would actually look like, I cannot envision what it will look like, and I have insufficient information to make an informed decision as to whether the applicant has met the requirements necessary for final site plan approval in that regard. If the plans do not permit me to envision the actual screen, I cannot make an informed decision as to its sufficiency and cannot approve the applicant's landscape plan, which, given the adjoining residential uses and requirements, expressed requirements of the buffer ordinance, I consider to be a key component of site plan approval. As previously stated, the burden is on the applicant to prove it meets the requirement. It is not the obligation for this board to prove that the requirements were not met." Ms. Kleiner, you previously expressed who should assist this board with the landscape plan when you said...
Thank you, Mr. Martinson. Will the next person come up, please? Could you state your name and spell it, please?
Michael Macchiara. I live at 34 Mindbrook Road.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please begin.
Ms. Kleiner, you previously expressed your problems with the landscaping plan. You said that you believed Mr. Khan might be accurate, but you do not believe his testimony or opinion because he's a civil engineer with no expertise in landscaping. So tonight, as this board considers the vote, do we feel comfortable that the changes here that the ISBR is proposing are adequate? Has an engineer with landscaping expertise reviewed this design? Have you seen a cross-section as needed by Chair Plaza to make an informed decision on this critical matter? Or can we envision standing on the Quicks' property and getting a close-up view of a solid 6-foot fence, so that a cross-section may not be necessary? Are you comfortable with the landscaping committee resolving screening issues after construction? Are you comfortable that the existing trees adequately are protected from the fence and the swell near the Quick property? And why didn't ISBR relocate that fence, the 6-foot strip of land between its parking area and the detention basin, to give the Quicks the benefit of trees as opposed to a fence? So in closing, I think it's clear that the continued need for a fence so close to the Quick property can only mean that the current final site plan does not meet the township buffering, screening, or landscape requirements. Next, I want to talk about internal circulation, specifically Section 21-39.3A3B, which states the traffic circulation shall be designed to minimize the use of aisles serving parking areas. In the denial on December 8, all board members commented on the serious traffic and safety issues that ISBR's internal circulation plan had. As you recall, the prior plan called for a drop-off of passengers and children in the middle of an active drive aisle in front of a number of handicapped parking spaces where pedestrians would then enter directly into the prayer hall through the alleged public entrance. The internal circulation problems were evident, and they were perhaps best summed up by Ms. Kleiner, who, again, did not believe that a traffic engineer expertise was proven. And that there were no plans for the drop-off or pickup that satisfied her needs. Chair Piedichi, you echoed similar concerns to Ms. Kleiner's, calling the circulation plan, quote, "a disaster waiting to happen." And you commented that, in conclusion, the circulation plan as presented did not meet the ordinance's requirements because it maximizes the use of aisles and does not include a protocol for analysis and discussion. Jody Alper, a former member of this board who's moved on to the judiciary, said, quote, "I have a real problem with the traffic circulation plan that was submitted. It's my belief that the traffic circulation plan submitted drops the passengers off smack in the middle of a traffic aisle, and I think for me, it looks very dangerous." Finally, as a condition for preliminary approval, Ms. Pavlini would have required ISBR to, and I quote, "submit a drop-off/pickup plan prepared by a professional engineer with expertise in traffic engineering for review, and approval by the board engineer and planning experts who may consult with the traffic engineer expert if they wish," end quote. Well, as you can see in ISBR's final plans that are here today, other than the elimination of a few handicapped spaces, nothing has really changed. That is, the drive aisles, internal circulation, and pickup and drop-off plans are largely the same. In fact, in the documents available for public viewing prior to this meeting, there wasn't any circulation protocol or any type of plan prepared by a professional traffic engineer at all. I would offer that the internal circulation plan remains a disaster waiting to happen, and the continued failure to comply with 21-39.3A3B alone provides the planning board a sufficient basis for which it can once again deny ISBR's application to construct this building at 124 Church Street. With the changes to the site plan stemming from the elimination of the 31 otherwise necessary parking spaces along the eastern side of the parking lot, ISBR faced a conflict between shifting its detention basin, or as much of it as possible, out of the buffer area, or providing drive aisles which were compliant in width for the safety of its members, particularly the children attending the Sunday school. As a reminder, all six board members determined that the fire and safety access of the plan was deficient. The board's previous concerns were probably best summed up by Ms. Kleiner when you said, quote, "The last area that makes me reluctant to grant even preliminary approval for this applicant is access to the site for fire and safety. Specifically, I am concerned about the parking lot and fire lane widths not being acceptable. In my opinion, ordinance 21-46A dot 1E..." In the second sentence...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next person, come up. Good evening. Will you state and spell your name, please?
Eileen Fitzpatrick. 277 Mount Prospect Road, Far Hills.
You raise your right hand, please, and do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please begin.
I'm continuing Michael Macchiara's fire and safety access. And to go on, that Chair Plaza commented after Ms. Kleiner that he joined in the observations of Ms. Piedichi that this application fails to comply with the NFPA 1141 in two critical respects, and that is, as previously stated, it fails to comply with Section 5.4.1, which requires a 26-feet-wide aisle in the area of 90-degree parking stalls, which is deficient on the proposed plans in the easterly and westerly sides of the parking lot, as well as the rear of the building. And it also fails to comply with the Section 5.4.2, which requires that parking lot aisles adjacent to the building provide a travel lane with a minimum of 24 feet clear width. The one-way drive aisle adjacent to the westerly side of the building, which leads to the parking lot and the rear, is only 20 feet at certain points. As such, the application does not comply with NFPA 1141, as incorporated by reference in Ordinance 21-46A point 1E1. Specifically, I find that the applicant's failure to comply with this ordinance, which directly relates to an issue of traffic circulation for fire department apparatus. An essential element of the site plan involving a matter vital to the public health requires the board to deny preliminary site plan approval. And in making that determination, I rely upon the holding Indiana versus Washington Township Planning Board. The need for ISBR to comply with NFPA 1141 was summed up by previous Chair Plaza when he said, "Similar to member Piedichi, I agree with resident Cody Smith that NFPA 1141 applies in this instance relative to the fire department apparatus access. In support of that finding, it is significant to me that the applicant never argued that an alternative NFPA standard apply in lieu of NFPA 1141. Moreover, it is equally critical to me that the applicant expressly relied upon NFPA 1141 in its closing argument to establish why it was not required to maintain collapse zones at the project." And I'm referencing PowerPoint slides 69 and 70 of the applicant's closing arguments, end quote. I would also like to add that throughout the hearings on the initial ISBR application, Mr. Khan and Mr. Raymar referenced NFPA requirements many other times. And for your reference, these are listed on page 20 in the notes to the PowerPoint presentation given to the planning board by Cody Smith on April 21, 2015. So with respect to the final site plans presented before you tonight, please take particular note that they have the exact same issues as this planning board denied on December 8, 2015. Specifically, the drive aisles of the east and west sides of the parking lot, as well as the parking aisle at the rear of the lot, remain at 24, not 26 feet required by NFPA 1141. The site plan also fails to comply with NFPA Section 5.4.2, as the parking lot aisles on the westerly side and in the front of the building remain at 20 feet rather than the minimum 24 feet as required. Furthermore, if you look closely at the most recent sheet, C13 Vehicle Circulation and Fire Safety Plan, note the odd turns that a 47-foot fire truck must make to traverse the facility, particularly in the rear of the parking lot. In fact, it must cross into the parking stalls in the southwest corner of the parking area to make the turn. If these plans are accurate, it is unlikely to circle through the parking lot in a single sweep without having to back up, even with the precision parking by the ISBR members and expert driving by the volunteer operator of the fire apparatus. This alone simply supports the need for wider drive aisles. And recall that the Liberty Corner Fire Company Review Committee, which is comprised of several experienced firefighters, including the past Liberty Corner Fire Chiefs, stated that they may not order fire apparatus around or behind ISBR's facility due to the danger presented with the proximity of driveways to the structure. The committee was also concerned fire apparatus would be stuck behind ISBR's facility, and that was in a memo, February 6, 2015, from fire officials to David Schley. In closing, the township's ordinance appears quite clear, and ISBR's own testimony acknowledges that NFPA 1141 must be followed in this application. Moreover, the most recent plans submitted by the ISBR show that the township's fire apparatus cannot maneuver efficiently through ISBR's parking lot, which further supports the LCFC Review Committee's documented assertion regarding the limits placed on fire apparatus deployed to ISBR's jammed facility. Now speaking about stormwater management. During the hearings for the initial application, this board received a stormwater management design review prepared by Paul Fox.
Next person, come up.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Jeffrey Plaza, Sixth Frederick Court, Basking Ridge.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony that you're going to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please begin, Mr. Plaza.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor, Council, Board Professionals, other members of the board. I come before you this evening to advocate for one thing and one thing only, and that is the preservation of the integrity of our local government and municipal land use process. Most respectfully, the proposed board action this evening is prohibited by the Municipal Land Use Law, specifically NJSA 40:55D-23 Sub. Land Use Law, specifically NJSA 40:55D-23, Subpart B, the Local Government Ethics Law at NJSA 40A:9-22.5, New Jersey Common Law, as reflected in both the Grabowski v. Township of Montclair, 221 NJ 536, 2015, and Wizikowski v. Rezus, 132 NJ 509, 1993, as well as this board's own adopted rules, because the terms of the settlement agreement between ISBR and the planning board create an incurable conflict of interest for every board member, with the exception of Mr. Zidell. As all four bases of the conflict of interest I've cited parallel each other, and given the limitation of time this evening, I'm going to focus my comments and analysis on the relevant MLUL section for efficiency, as it's most directly applicable to this meeting and the proposed action this evening. The conflict of interest provision of the MLUL within the planning board member section states, at the citation previously given, "No member of the planning board shall be permitted to act on any matter in which he has, either directly or indirectly, any personal or financial interest." All of the current board members, who are also individually named defendants in the ISBR lawsuit, have a direct personal or financial interest in the settlement agreement they are scheduled to vote on this evening. The resulting conflict of interest is created by the express terms of the agreement itself in the form posted on the township website. Specifically, under the terms of the settlement agreement, ISBR and its president have agreed to provide each of the individual defendants, individually named defendants, with a personal release of liability of any and all claims, regardless of when they arose and regardless if they relate in any way whatsoever to the subject litigation. Paragraph 14 of the settlement agreement provides release of all claims by plaintiffs and defendants. Simultaneously with the signing and filing of the joint stipulation of dismissal pursuant to paragraph 15 herein, plaintiffs and defendants shall exchange fully executed the releases attached to this agreement as Exhibit F and Exhibit G. Exhibit F contains the full general release of claims by ISBR, Mr. Chaudry, to the township, the planning board, and each individual township committee member and planning board members who agreed to sign on to that agreement in their individual capacity. As such, every member of the township committee and every current member of the planning board, with the exception of Mr. Zidell, will receive ultimately a general release of all personal liability under the settlement agreement if it is approved tonight. The scope of the release that will be granted to these individual board members under Exhibit F is encapsulated in the final sentence, which confirms plaintiffs are releasing all claims against them, quote, "whether known or unknown, which plaintiffs ever had, now have, or hereafter can, shall, or may have from the beginning of time through the effective date of the settlement agreement." Additionally, at paragraph 13 of the settlement agreement, plaintiffs also agree to provide the same individuals with another release of claims relating to those allegations and the complaints set forth in Exhibit E. Critically, paragraph 13 also provides that, quote, "Plaintiffs' release and disagreement shall be rendered void if the planning board fails to provide preliminary final site plan approval of the settlement site plan based on the Whispering Woods hearing, or fails to adopt a resolution memorializing its decision as described in paragraphs 2 and 3 herein," end quote. Similar contingent language marrying the two things together was read by Mr. Drell out of paragraph 2 earlier tonight. As a result of this expressed language in the settlement agreement, every individually named defendant who has joined in the settlement with ISBR, whether they publicly voted for it or against it in their official capacity, will receive a direct personal benefit from the settlement in the form of the previously described general release of personal liability. Under the terms of the agreement, however, the individuals will only receive that personal benefit if a majority of the board in their official capacity vote to approve the settlement agreement tonight. That is, in irrefutable and impermissible quid pro quo, a personal benefit in exchange for an affirmative vote. Objectively, on that basis, those individuals cannot take any action on this matter, given their, quote, "personal or financial interest," end quote, in it, which is a reference again to the MLUL provision. I want to be abundantly clear that I do not think for one second that any board member intended to create this conflict, did anything intentionally to create this conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, the floor. Go ahead.
Mr. Drell, Madam Chair, Kevin Orr, a former board member. Pleased to see you all again under these circumstances.
What's your address?
28 Squire Court. I'll brief, because now I'm on the clock.
Hold up, hold up, hold up. Raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Absolutely, Mr. Drell. I like to... O-R-R. Hopefully, I'm not being charged for that. Mr. Drell, you of all people should know, and it's one of the reasons I was instrumental in your hiring, is because of your connection to Mr. Koenig, former board attorney, and now you're actually listed as the co-author of the book. So I want to cite your book back to you. And in particular, I want to direct your attention to Section 5.12, which in many respects mirrors exactly what former Chairman Plaza indicated. I too am very concerned about the process. I've always been concerned about the process. I believe in maintaining the highest integrity, and it's in that capacity that I served for 10 years on both the planning board and the zoning board in this community. It saddens me to see, and again, I ascribe no fault to any of the individual members, but it saddens me to see that the process is so fatally flawed tonight that it actually presents a mockery of the Whispering Woods hearing that our New Jersey Supreme Court prescribed for approving a settlement. The board members that... There's four board members tonight that are fatally disqualified. They cannot act. The law is basically clear that planning boards are quasi-judicial bodies. They're like a court. Their members are held to a higher standard. While the conflict standard remains the same, there's a greater need to maintain the integrity of these types of boards than any other boards in our community. They must be free from that taint of self-interest. And it's within that guise that the land use law created the statute that no member of the board shall be permitted to act in any manner in which he has either directly or indirectly any personal or financial interest. The complaint, and I differ, and I'm sorry for Mr. Plaza for this, the complaint charges four members up here with acting inappropriately in their official capacity. I disagree with Mr. Plaza. I don't believe there was an individual claim of liability set forth in that complaint. Therefore, what's happening tonight is, as part of this settlement, if, as Mr. Plaza noted, this settlement is approved, those four members will in fact receive personal releases from any and all conduct, whether now known or unknown, meaning that by way of example, and I should say, it's not just them, but it's each and every one of the township committee members as well, receive that personal financial gain of a personal release for any and all conduct. I'm not saying there were inappropriate emails, but hypothetically, if there were inappropriate emails, if there were inappropriate malfeasance, the individuals, including township committee members, would receive a release from that for their own personal liability. It's that type of impermissible taint that renders these members incapable of voting on tonight's application. I'll further note that the appearance of impropriety standard is still alive and well. Although not in the legal community, it is alive and well under municipal land use law and under our ethics laws and rules that exist within our community here. And even if we didn't consider this a direct conflict, which it absolutely, 110%, is, the appearance standard would absolutely make your average citizen believe that nobody up here, after now Mr. Plaza and I have explained the process, could make a fair and unbiased, impartial decision that acts solely in the interest of the community. It's that reason, in addition to the other reasons of common law and the basic MLUL language and the conflict laws and our own individual policies here, that require these members to step aside and not vote on tonight's application. I'll note further, to digress for a moment, that I was a member that was present on this board during the initial phase of the hearings. And this is my first public opportunity to speak out and say, "I personally did nothing other than represent the interests of the community in a fair and unbiased manner. At no time was I ever influenced by an improper methodology or belief against Islam or any other religion. I was always grounded in seeking the pure application of our land use laws, and I believe that the decision made by the board was correct as it relates to the parking decision, and I believe that the applicant never produced any adequate evidence that was objective as to a basis as to why there should be anything other than the original parking number that was approved and adopted by the board based upon the testimony of its experts." That, I believe, is a statement that I stand by to this day, and this board and any board members that should be viewing this application in the future should consider wholeheartedly. Thank you very much.
Next person, come up, please. Good evening, Mrs. Quick.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Loretta Quick, and I reside at 114 Church Street, Liberty Corner.
You raise your right hand. And do you swear that the testimony and comments that you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Please begin.
I would very much like to address the planning board concerning the construction of a mosque next door to my home. I will, however, not speak and provide my views, because I am fearful of what may happen to me if I do so. There is a federal court order that precludes me and every other speaker here from discussing Islam and Muslims. As many of you know, my husband and I filed a lawsuit to invalidate this provision. Despite, as written, the statement to the judge by the township that they would not enforce this written provision, they did not remove it and the judge did not invalidate it. Therefore, the prohibition is still part of the binding settlement agreement that is enforceable as a court order. I am fearful of how that order may be used. That federal court order arises from a settlement agreement that the township reached with ISBR. ISBR has previously harassed and intimidated me by, and among other things, sending me an oppressive subpoena for a host of private information, including my personal emails. ISBR and the town are now working together, as evidenced by the fact that, in a recent court filing, the town made the same attacks on my attorneys as ISBR did in its own prior court papers. Therefore, I fear that the ISBR and the town and/or the town will retaliate against me and use the federal court order to place me in legal jeopardy if I give the information I would like to provide regarding this project. Thank you.
Good evening. Please state and spell your name, please, and give your address.
Kathleen Mahala, M-A-H-A-L-A, 51 Leighton Road, Far Hills.
Thank you very much.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony and sworn comments you're going to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Can you hear you?
I do.
Thank you.
Please begin.
My comments are regarding the storm water management. During the hearings for the initial application, this board received a storm water management design review prepared by Paul Fox, professional engineer at Apgar Associates, which outlined 13 deficiencies in ISBR's storm water management design. Is this board now comfortable with that revised storm water management design? Is it in compliance with all the township and state ordinances? As it appears, a number of Mr. Fox's noted deficiencies have not been addressed. For instance, prior testimony established that groundwater recharge from this site was required, was absent, a specified wa... I'm sorry. Was required absent a specified waiver from the planning board. It was further asserted that ISBR's soil testing was insufficient to grant such a waiver. Mr. Quinn's suggestions included a recharge area to remove this issue. In fact, in his September 28, 2015 memo addressing Mr. Fox's findings, he opined that ISBR's drainage system complies with applicable regulations only, quote, "on the basis that the applicant will incorporate recharge into the current drainage design system," end quote. Finally, in her list of conditions for preliminary site plan approval, Ms. Pavlini required the ISBR provide groundwater recharge unless it meet the strict requirements for a waiver. AWZ's current report, as did its prior report, states that, "Due to inadequate permeability rates of the present soils, recharge is not being accounted for, nor is it required based on such permeability rates." And in the checklist at the front of AWZ's report, for proof that groundwater recharge standards are met, it still indicates NA, not applicable. In other words, ISBR continues to assert that groundwater recharge is not required. Is this board comfortable that ISBR's plan meets the recharge requirements? There was prior discussion as to whether compliance with the NJDEP Non-Structural Strategies Point System is required. On page 5 of AWZ's engineering report that cites, that sits before you tonight, Mr. Kahn continues to assert that compliance with the point system is required, and even refers to the point system in his discussion of the swale that has been added. Item 13A of Mr. Fox's report states that ISBR's site is located in State Planning Area 3 for purposes of the point system. In both its prior and current reports, it shows ISBR's site in State Planning Area 2. It appears that other inaccuracies in Mr. Fox's... Other inaccuracies Mr. Fox pointed out in ISBR's non-structural strategies remain even today. As noted earlier this evening, the revised plan includes 140-foot vegetated swale to control and collect stormwater runoff. Appendix fee for the grassed waterway swales calculation is not legible. Furthermore, the location of the vegetation swale and IDA 1 of the storm order report or on the engineering drawings, it appears an eight-inch diameter pipe, 118 feet in length, will be dug into the ground and inserted within the drip lines of existing trees in the eastern buffer. It is therefore unclear how one could get comfort on its design effectiveness as a replacement of the previous swale that was considered necessary to collect off-site drainage onto ISBR's property. In his closing remarks, Chairman Plaza referenced the numerous supplemental calculations the applicant had performed to assess errors in AWZ engineering report that were raised by Mr. Fox. Without the board's understanding of those calculations, Chairman Plaza stated, page 39, quote, "That the plan as submitted does not provide enough information for the board to make an informed decision on its adequacy and compliance for storm water ordinance requirements," end quote. It is not clear whether the plan before this board incorporates Mr. Fox's suggested changes or should include the supplemental calculations for known errors in AWZ engineering's report. In summary, the storm water management report is suspect, which is consistent with what we've seen throughout these proceedings. Mr. Quinn's July 6, 2017 review memo points out many careless errors in Mr. Kahn's work product. While Mr. Chaudry has found the resources to hire a high-priced lawyer, he can't afford to have another engineer check Mr. Kahn's work.
Thank you very much. Next person, come up.
Good evening. Good evening, excuse me. Cody Smith, 36 Weill Oak Drive.
You swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please begin, Mr. Smith.
Members of the board, this hearing is entitled the Whispering Woods Hearing. It is not. A Whispering Woods Hearing gives citizens the right to comment on the terms of a settlement before the settlement is signed. You have already signed the agreement. Moreover, by the terms of that agreement, which is now a binding order of a federal judge, we may not comment on any of the terms of the settlement because the explicit language of the settlement agreement says, page 7, paragraph G, that "All comments at this hearing made by any interested party or resident of Bernard's Township shall be strictly limited to addressing differences between the site settlement plan and the site plan that was denied by the planning board, and no other comments shall be permitted. We may not comment on the terms of the settlement agreement at all." That being said, I offer the following comments, constrained though they may be by the federal court order. Tonight, we've heard comments from members of the public regarding ISBR's deficient screening and landscaping, internal circulation, fire and safety access, and storm water. If this sounds familiar, you probably said it best, Chair Padice, when you said, "In conclusion, I believe there were choices that the applicant could have made over the last three years to have this application comply with the buffer ordinance, improve internal circulation, finalize the storm water design, and improve the fire and safety access to this site." I believe it is not the board's job to tell the applicant how to do this. I believe it's not the board's job to tell the applicant to reduce the maximum number of occupants of the building, thus requiring less parking, less storm water management, less coverage... less coverage, and have a compliant buffer area. The constraints on this property were made by the applicant. The applicant has the ability to redesign the project to rectify these self-created problems. This has not been done to date, and that is why I feel I have no choice but deny this application as currently before us. So tonight, ISBR has again presented its final site plans. Once again, ISBR had choices that it could make when a federal judge ruled that it could reduce the number of parking spaces, and when the Township Committee decided to take the easy way out in not appealing the judge's decision. On December 8, 2015, when this very planning board voted to deny ISBR's application, everyone knew that regardless of the decision, that there would be ensuing litigation, and we thought the Township Committee had your back. The problem here is that the Township Committee got caught flat-footed and is trying to surrender to the unrelenting pressures from Dr. Chodry and his misinformed allies. In keeping with the Township Committee's sellout, the open and meticulous procedures employed by the planning board when initially reached its thorough, well-informed, and carefully constructed opinion has been replaced by this one-time rushed, limited-public-input charade, which may also be unconstitutional, as orchestrated by ISBR and approved behind closed doors by the Township Committee. Essentially, this is a cram-down. The Township Committee throws the problems back to the planning board and expects you to carry their water. This should be especially troubling to each of you, and ISBR has the nerve to submit the same set of plans with the exact same issues which were the basis for the planning board's initial denial. So please keep back, think back on the reasons ISBR's plans were originally denied, and ask yourselves whether the plans have substantially changed to address all the material weaknesses and flaws that were cited in the board's original denial. And as a reminder, nothing in Judge Ship's December 31, New Year's Eve, I might add, ruling on parking addresses, screening, and landscaping, internal circulation, fire and safety aspects, or storm water concerns. To me and many here, the answer is ISBR has arrogantly elected to serve up the same set of deficient plans. Thank you for your time tonight and your volunteer service to Burners Township.
Michael Bart, 14 Anan Road.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. With objection to that, because in many ways, as been said before, that's basically utterly vague what one can say here tonight, and also an objection to what seems to be a change of notice, what one can say what Mr. Drill was reading earlier, which, without having an opportunity, 10 days to actually know, or any notice, actually, other than after the meeting started, to actually understand what instructions Mr. Drill was changing. And also, Madam Chair, perhaps at a later point, you could ask Mr. Drill to clarify what has been more recently filed. I know he talked about something being filed on August 4, which was Friday, about perhaps Somerset County's change in jurisdiction, and it's not clear what that is. You know, actually, with all due respect, you don't need much of my testimony, because it's actually, it's the town's press release of, was it May 30, 2017, that basically admits why this should be rejected, because the town's press release themselves, you yourselves say that this is a public health and safety hazard, and that was your standard. But you don't need any further testimony. You've stated it yourself. And, Madam Chair, you can take judicial notice of that. Also, it's been stated before here about whether this meeting is complying with Whispering Woods or not, which, in some sense, if it has to be, it's treated as a new application. Madam Chair, the board could take judicial notice of its own transcripts of September 16, 2015, at page 51, that were available. And that was what Mr. Drill, you may recall, Mr. Drill and Mr. Schley stated that whether or not this application was ruled completeness in error. And at that time, the MLUL did not allow them to undo it. So if, in fact, Whispering Woods allows us to treat it as a new application, this application should be deemed incomplete. Madam Chair, you can look toward the transcripts of 916, 2015. Lastly, a procedural question, I suppose. That is, Madam Chair, Mr. Mead Drill could advise that the minutes of, prior minutes were incorrect, and specifically, that deals with, and actually, the minutes, the board voted to change the minutes, but the former secretary did not correct those, and that was of June 12, 2014. Whether I submitted photographs I took to the applicant's property as compared to, you may recall, Mr. Drill, about what was then an exhibit NB1, and actually, it was, take judicial notice of your own transcripts, of November 3, 2015, on page 165, that recognized that this document was from ISBR's website. And the relevancy of that, Madam Chair, is that the board, you talk about things that have changed. The board itself has issued a press release that this is an Islamic Cultural Center. You may recall Mr. Plaza ruled that a communist center is not a permitted use there. So I would ask, Madam Chair, if I need to make a motion that I'd be able to send something in to correct the minutes that the board actually agreed to correct that actually never was.
Sorry, that's out of order at this point, Mr. Bart.
Again, no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else coming up to speak? I can't see around the corners. Okay. Please come to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Linda Waldruff, 111 Anan Road.
Can you spell your last name?
Frank.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony that you're going to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Please begin.
Okay. First of all, the site plans that I have, I purchased the whole set, the site plans I looked at, still do not take into consideration the easement, the gas line easement that runs through the property, that's been brought up before. It's still shown approximate. The limit of disturbance runs up to it, and there's no distance from the road to that easement. Prior drawings showed it 75 feet closer to Church Street. So where exactly is it? You need to know exactly where this is. You need a bearing in distance along it, and you need the distance up the sideline to this easement. And it was brought up a long time ago, and it was supposed to be taken care of and checked into. There's a wetland area that was along this approximate easement that was, we brought it up, we had pictures of it, and all of a sudden, now the vegetation has disappeared, which is something that's not legal either. You're not supposed to remove wetland vegetation. The limit of disturbance on these plans runs along, part of it runs along this approximate easement, and it runs along the easterly sideline of this property, along Quick's property, which means that the disturbance could be into the roots of the trees. It's got to be moved. We've already had this discussion with expert witnesses. There's no fence that's supposed to be that close, and that was already, it was memorialized in the rejection of this plan. Let's see. There's trees now that are marked to be removed that don't fall into the detention basin that's proposed, that have to be looked at. And the fencing needs to be moved farther away from the six-foot fence, needs to be moved closer to the mosque, can't be in the buffer zone, it should not be into the canopy area of the trees, and also across the front of the property. You still need a permanent buffer area or a vegetation area, a screening. You need a fence along there, and according to what was turned down, according to the memorialized rejection, a hardship variance would not be approved because of self-created hardship by proposing too much of a building lot back when we first were discussing this. Structures on the adjoining properties are not shown. The Quick's garage is 50 feet from the property line. Conveniently, these plans show everything towards Somerville Road. They don't show anything in Quick's property. That applies to the drainage area maps. That part of the maps goes up into the next two or three properties. There's no structure shown on there that shows no impact on anything around. There's no cross-sections, and that was requested by the board when we were here in front of you. And another side note, there was an exception made, I guess, for the sewer connection, and we wanted to know if it's going to be allowed for the mosque, if it's going to be allowed for the rest of the people down the line, down to Somerville Road, or even to Somerville Road. If ISBR can get a sewer connection, how about the next lot down? And I am pretty much finished.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Sir, anybody else? Is there anybody else?
There's no one else in line here.
Thank you very much. I will now, the hearing is now closed for public participation.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to respond to a number of the comments made.
Please proceed.
With respect to the comments made by Jeffrey Plaza, their foundation and entire thrust was that the members of the board sitting on this dais have been sued in their individual capacity. That suggestion is flat-out wrong. If anyone looks at the caption of the federal case, which is duplicated as part of the settlement agreement, which is part of this record, no one was sued in their individual capacity. They were only sued in their official capacity. In fact, Kevin Orr agrees with me and disagrees with Mr. Plaza on that point. With regard to the comments by Kevin Orr, he raised a straw man in insinuating that any members of the board sitting on this dais wrote improper emails for which they are now going to be released. We do not have any knowledge of any improper emails written by anyone who is today sitting on this application. With regard to Loretta Quick and her suggestion that she has been chilled or that she is in fear of making certain remarks, even though Mr. Drill wrote a very clear statement and read it at the beginning of this hearing, which should have allayed any alleged fears, her concerns were fully aired earlier today before the United States District Court for the District of New Jersey, and Judge Ship rejected her concerns, refused to give her any relief, and held that she was not likely to succeed on the merits if she chose to pursue her concerns after today's hearing. And so, in view of Judge Ship's rulings and holdings today, and Mr. Drill's comments, Mrs. Quick and her husband, who did not show up to comment, have waived their concerns, their fears, and their objections. With regard to Cody Smith, the township's four professionals, including the fire official, have now commented on the plans, and the ISBR application, which is now before the board, are fully compliant with the settlement agreement and with the commentary of the township's duly-engaged professionals, who are, after all, by their term, professionals. A number of the members of the public commented on fire safety, fire circulation, and the like. It's ancient history, because the current plans were reviewed by the fire official, who made only one comment about the fire department connection, asking that it be moved. It was moved, and is shown in its moved position, the position that the fire official requested in the plans that are before the board. So except for the tiny revisions, that still need to be made to the plans in view of the professional review letters, which I identified specifically at the beginning of the hearing, there are no unmet requirements either of the settlement agreement or by your professionals. I have no further comments.
Thank you, Mr. Raymar. The board will now begin its deliberation and vote. Would anybody like to start the deliberations?
I'd like, if I could say, I'd like, basically, a question for Mr. Drill. I'd like Mr. Drill to comment, and I'd get to the board professionals as well, regarding, what their attorney just said regarding the plans and everything, in terms of, everything has now been brought into compliance. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, I think each of the professionals should answer the question. Each of you has a report.
Yeah. I categorically reviewed the terms of the settlement agreement in my report dated August 4, and I found that each of the requirements in terms of the terms of the agreement, specific plan revisions, and the conditions of approval were addressed in the revised plan set, or settlement site plan and materials. And my review letter indicates categorically how the plans actually comply with each of the requirements in that settlement agreement.
Mr. Schley, regarding some of the comments--
I can echo that, as far as the applicant agreed to address the comments that I had remaining in my review memo tonight, and the rest, the plans comply with the settlement agreement.
Mr. Bash, obviously.
And I would echo that. Look, we're all doing the same thing, given a very, very tight framework through which to review this. We've all gone through this exhaustively--
Yeah.
--and determined whether or not the plan submission complies with this settlement agreement. And we're all saying the same thing. I know I've heard issues about storm water, in particular, recharge issue, that was open-ended at the end of the last go-around. The settlement agreement clearly identifies the issues in my September 28, 15 memo that was brought up before that were to be focused on. The ones that are not included in the settlement agreement were ones we were not obligated to focus on. That's why some of the issues, particularly the one recharge issue that I heard bandied about here tonight, is not part of the purview in this planning board review. So in accordance with the settlement agreement, we've all reviewed it and determined that it complies with the agreement.
And then I just have one more thing for Mr. Drill regarding the comments from Mr. Orr and Mr. Plaza.
Any of those legal arguments, they can appeal whatever action this board takes, and let an appropriate court decide if they're right or wrong. I'm not weighing in on that one.
Understood.
Okay, so I'd like to again ask that we begin deliberations? Would anybody like to begin?
I have one more question, which is, Mr. Raymar, early on, said he agreed with all of the comments made in Mr. Schley's letter, but he only specified up to number four. Is it correct that he's incorporating everything in that letter?
I, yes, but I only mentioned those aspects of the letter that, through their own words, said there was something that needed to be done.
Put it this way, but you, on behalf of the applicant, agree with everything in Mr. Schley's letter, so just--
So just in the event, I don't know of anything you may have missed, but if you did miss something, you're agreeing to it on behalf of the applicant, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Would anybody like to start the deliberations? The board requirement for 107 parking spaces was reversed by the operation of law.
No, don't mind me.
Due to a federal district court ruling on December 31, 2016, that the board cannot require more than 50 spaces. As a result of this ruling, my objections to the plan denied by the planning board were substantially addressed in the settlement site plan. I do find some aspects of the settlement problematic. However, approving the application far outweighs the cost to the township of further litigation. Therefore, I will vote to approve the application and all required relief with the conditions set forth in the professional reports and subject to the Somerset County Planning Board approval and the Bernard's Township Sewage Authority approval and to ratify the settlement. Are there any further comments?
Sure, I have some comments.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Gaziano.
The planning board made their decision on the initial application based solely on land use considerations following the Bernard's Township ordinances. Subsequently, the applicant sued both the township and the planning board claiming religious discrimination. On December 31, 2016, District Court Judge issued an opinion that Bernard's Township cannot require a different number of parking spaces for different houses of worship regardless of their use, and that based on the maximum capacity of 150 in this particular application, the planning board can only require 50 parking spaces. This reduction of parking spaces has allowed the applicant to make revisions to the site plan addressing the shortcomings in the original application. I'm satisfied that the revisions to the site plan, along with the agreed-upon conditions, satisfy the requirements for preliminary and final site plan approval. I will vote to approve the application and to ratify the settlement agreement. My decision, as always, is based solely on what is in the best interest of our town. I have absolutely no personal or financial interest in this application or any other, and I strongly disagree and resent the comments made to that regard.
Thank you, Mayor Gaziano. Are there any more comments?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman. While I completely understand the frustration felt by many of our residents, including myself, the fact is that the local land use constraints, which have been imposed and levied against this township by the Federal Department of Justice, coupled with the very costly litigation to date, compel me to vote in favor of this application. This is in order to forego any potential future financial burdens to the citizens of Bernard's Township, and of course, is subject to all the conditions being met in the settlement agreement, approval by the Somerset County Planning Board, and a Bernard's Township Sewage Authority. Subject to these stipulations by the applicant, my vote will be yes.
Thank you, Mr. Beldessari. Any other comments? I now ask for a motion and a second.
We'll do the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Zidel.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the application and all required relief with the conditions set forth in the professional reports and subject to the Somerset County Planning Board approval and the Bernard's Township Sewage Authority approval and to ratify the settlement.
Thank you, Mrs. Zidel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Ms. Kiefer, roll call, please.
Certainly. Mr. Beldessari?
Yes.
Mayor Gaziano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Zidel?
Yes.
Chairwoman Pedici?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I would like a motion to adjourn the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Beldessari, seconded by Mayor Gaziano. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.